The North Las Vegas City Council welcomes you to City Council meeting this evening. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards located in the table outside the main entrance where you entered, or to the left of me on the podium rail, please give the clerk over here, sitting to my left, the card, and when I call upon you, I will request you limit your comments to more than three minutes and we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada Open Meeting Law? Thank you very much. Tonight, with the opportunity having the invocation given by our own Councilman Scott Black, following that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Richard Churchill. Please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, we pause at the beginning of this City Council meeting, bow our heads in gratitude for the many wonderful blessings which are bestowed upon us as a city, as a city council, as individuals that have the good fortune of living in this area. At this time, I pray for blessings to be upon the citizens of North Las Vegas, that there can be peace in each home, that the schoolchildren can be strengthened and given the courage to deal with the challenges that are before us, that every child will be blessed with and fortified with strength and comfort and peace. Grateful for our first responders and ask a blessing upon each of them as they work each day and night to keep us safe, that they may do so with thy protection and watchful eye over them. Please guide our actions this evening as we strive to serve our community and make North Las Vegas a better place than we found it, and I pray for these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you very much, Council. Appreciate that. It's good to have good patriots and good practicing people up here blessing us. We are now moving on to council items. Councilman Verone, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to thank very much. We see the donation of ten shower chairs for the seniors at the Neighborhood Recreation Center. I think, actually, it might have been more than ten, but it was nice to see that people in the community donated these shower chairs for our seniors. And also, I'm happy to say that we'll be attending the grand opening of Denny's. I know they've been open for a couple of weeks now, but the official grand opening will be this Saturday, January 22nd, I do believe, I think at 10 o'clock, and I could be wrong, but check your local listings, most definitely. But anyhow, it's a nice little step forward.
Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to mention very briefly the fact that they understand test kits are going to be mailed to everybody across the United States. We got notice of that, and all of us as council members will be placing that information in our upcoming newsletter for the residents to see, and of course, most of us who have Facebook will also be placing them in our Facebook as well. Please share that information. Every home will get, I believe, four test kits and use them accordingly. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Black?
Thank you, Mayor Lee. We're very fortunate in North Las Vegas to have thirty-plus awesome parks and a great trail system that weaves throughout our community. I love our parks. We have some very capable staff that maintain and take care of them, but it's awesome to get out with neighbors and community members periodically to help with a park cleanup, to do a little TLC. And so, I would like to announce a few park cleanups. I guess I'm a sucker for a park cleanup. Coming up, the first one is January 29th. I love park cleanup so much, I'll even go to ones that are in Councilwoman Goin's Brown's area, Kyle Ranch. She said, "That's totally cool, come and clean, Scott." So Kyle Ranch Park on Saturday, January 29th, from 9:00 to 11:00, great opportunity to see that unique park in the center of our city and help clean it up. On the March 5th, from 9:00 to 11:00 at Flores Park, which is in Ward III, and on March 26th, if you have the energy and want to keep helping clean up the parks, join me again and you'll hear at a later date what park will be receiving the extra love. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Goin's Brown?
Just to continue with the shower chair delivery, we were able to deliver five additional shower chairs to the seniors at Rose Garden on last week Wednesday, and it's just phenomenal to see the thankfulness and the gratefulness on their faces, and this is just another way to help keep seniors safely in their homes. On Saturday, we had a successful, so, so successful Soul of Service shoe drive, and we hosted here in our North Las Vegas parking lot with Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated's Social Action Committee. The goal was to raise or donate one hundred and nine pairs of shoes donated in conjunction with the 109th year of the sorority. We surpassed that goal. We had a total of 307 pairs of shoes donated. Quite a few of them were brand-new shoes, and I know a lot of folks here at City Hall donated to the cause, so I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated, including staff for making that such a successful event. And just Monday was the 40th Annual Martin Luther King Parade held downtown, and North Las Vegas was represented throughout the entire parade. Go North Las Vegas, from our honor guard who led the parade, to our fire department, to our police department, to Council Verone and myself, so you could not know that we were not there because we were all over that parade. And then lastly, Mayor Pro Tem and I attended the grand opening of the Beauty Society and their ribbon cutting, and the mayor was also there on Simmons and Cheyenne, and this is a 40,000-square-foot facility that will operate as a mail-order beauty product place, and it was just phenomenal, very top-notch grand opening, and we even left with some swag bags with pretty cool makeup stuff in it. So I don't know what you're going to do with yours, Mayor Pro Tem or the mayor, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys are really doing a lot of work in your districts. Congratulations. Your residents should be very proud of the leadership you show from the city. We're going to move on to the public forum. Tonight, this time is set aside for comments on posted agenda items, excluding public hearings, which will be heard separately. So if you want to speak on any item listed on the consent agenda or business, now would be that time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards for posted agenda items or callers on the phone? We do not at this time. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward at this public forum? Seeing none, we'll close the public forum and we'll move on to the agenda.
Item one, approve City Council regular meeting agenda of January 19, 2022.
Thank you, Counsel. If there are any comments or questions on the agenda, if not, I'll take a motion.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items two through seven. It's our recommendation to approve its published.
Thank you. Once again, Counsel, if there's any comments or questions on the consent agenda, if not, the Chair will take a motion.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Item eight, public hearing pursuant to NRS 268.059 to accept appraised value of thirteen million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-one and seventy cents, as detailed in appraisals from Southwest Property Consultants dated August 13th, 2021, and appraisal from Anderson Valuation Group LLC dated November 12th, 2021, as the fair market value of approximately 18.92 acres of real property located in the downtown redevelopment core sub-district composed of 59 parcels generally located on or around East Lake Mead Boulevard in area generally bordered by Yale Street to the west, McGovern Ave. to north, Jefferson Street to east, and Oxford Ave. to south.
Thank you very much. Ms. Peterson, I see you had a blue card, but you had a meeting in the back. Are you okay with your questions now? Please come forward. We'll open up the public hearing.
Rayanne Peterson, I live at 1720 Arrowhead Street, North Las Vegas, Nevada. As a 61-year resident of the great city of North Las Vegas, I have a lot invested in this city, and I've spent that whole time in the downtown core of North Las Vegas. So I'm excited to see redevelopment. I've already been to Denny's twice with my husband and with my friends. So I have concerns about, and I've spoken with the folks from Agaro Group, I think that's how they're stated. My one concern that I would think if we're going to be doing a lot of things in this down Lake Mead at this point is when you're westbound on Lake Mead and you approach North Fifth and you want to go north, there's that nice, treacherous, four-foot-high barrier up against the right-hand lane, and that curve's there, and people are trying to get into a right-turn lane that really doesn't exist until the last 10 feet. And I know you guys are going to tell me that Lake Mead is a state highway and it's up to them, but I think there's no one more appropriate than the city to possibly approach them about, let's figure making a way to make this stretch of East Lake Mead as it goes under the freeway before it hits there at North Fifth, a little more driver-friendly and a little less treacherous trying to get through that curve to go north. So that's what I want to say, and I appreciate Mayor Lee for introducing me to the group that's purchasing this property, and excited to see some redevelopment come to downtown North Las Vegas.
Ms. Peterson, four years ago, I went to World, and everyone ought to know, for many, many years, you've served as chairman of the CBDG organization.
Oh, no, I'm the assistant chair.
What, your?
For the city. Yeah, for the city.
Yeah, the community block grant.
Vice chair. Yep.
She's had a long stellar career supporting our community, and I want you to know how much I appreciate you. Also, the gentleman in charge of the intersection of traffic, Mike, is in the backpack there. Mike, can you raise your hands for her over here? You see that?
Okay.
You can talk directly to him. He's got the traffic engineer that works for him.
Okay.
And then so, we'll get you handled.
That's great. I'm so tired of sitting through two lights when I'm on North Fifth trying to cross Lake Mead because I need to make a left turn, you know. I don't know if you folks ever have trouble there, but that's constant, just wasted time if they could time.
Mike, would you make sure you get to relate and have a meeting with her?
I'll go change phone numbers with him. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. We appreciate you. Anybody else on the phone? Any other blue cards? Anything there? Anybody from the audience should like to come forth on item number eight? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and call for a motion. Councilman?
Yes, Mayor. The only thing I want to say is I wanted to thank very much, the Development Office for working on this project, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion? Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number nine, public hearing and possible adoption of resolution number 2685 approving North Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency's sale of approximately 18.92 acres of real property in the city's downtown redevelopment core sub-district composed of 59 parcels generally located on or around East Lake Mead Boulevard in area bordered by Yale Street to west, McGovern Avenue to north, Jefferson Street to east, and Williams Avenue to south to KLQOZB2LLC for fifteen million, three hundred thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to note that the purchase and sale agreement that the city published as supporting material for this item last week was amended. The clerk's office uploaded a revised draft earlier today that was revised by city staff and the purchaser after the agenda was published on January 12th. The version dated January 18th is a version that the RDA will consider for approval, excuse me, at its special meeting following this City Council meeting.
Thank you very much. So we'll get Councilwoman Goin's Brown to chair that committee. Is there anybody from the audience, any blue cards, anybody on the phone that would like to speak on this issue at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We've got somebody, Mr. Jeff Albert, would like to say something, but I guess we're going to have another meeting with her issue on it. Can we push it to them?
Mayor, we could. I'm not sure if he was going to speak at the RDA meeting or at this meeting.
It was for both. He wanted to do one for RDA and one for the regular one.
Okay. Do we show anyone on the call? Anyone online? Okay. Are we able to add him? Are we not able to add him to this meeting?
We're only adopting the resolution here.
Okay. So at this time, we don't have anybody that's called in on this item?
Okay. So we're just adopting the resolution right now. Mr. Albert, if you're out there, we're having another meeting right after this meeting. We'll discuss that. We'll look for you then on the phone. They don't seem to have you anymore.
Or he said he'll try on the second public forum.
I can't hear you?
He said he will try on the second public forum, if that's okay?
Oh, that's fine. That's what we suspected.
We can have him call back in.
We suspected that. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, and if he could, Mayor, sorry, if he could make sure that anyone listening that would like to participate in the meeting, please call in on the numbers that are provided on the agenda.
So seeing nobody else coming forth, we'll close this public hearing, but we'll call for a motion to adopt resolution 2685. Chair will take a motion. If there's any other comments or questions?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt this resolution.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, Council, item 10, approve VAC 062021 Tropical Speedway Commerce Center for applicant harsh investment properties LLC to vacate a public drainage easement located east of Mount Hood Street and south of Tropical Parkway.
Thank you. We'll open a public hearing at this time. Are you here to discuss this and educate us?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey Armstrong. Here representing the applicant. We concur with staff recommendations and respectfully request your approval. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions concerning this public easement draining from the council? First off, let me see if there's anybody else in the audience here that would like to participate in this. Is there anybody from the audience? I'll open up the public hearing right now on the phone, telephone, anything. Then, who is, this is Jeff Armstrong speaking. Yeah. So I see none. We'll close the public hearing, and we will ask the council once again if anybody has any questions. Not the Chair will take a motion. I think this would be Councilwoman Verone.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to make a motion to approve this.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Good job, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Council, item 11, approve VAC 192021 Tropical Assemblies 2.0 for applicant Tropical 2.0 Industrial Owner LLC to vacate a public right-of-way utility and roadway easements generally located at the northwest corner of Azure Avenue and Beasley Drive.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Are there anybody on the phone? Any blue cards or telephone?
Mr. Mayor, we do have a caller.
Anybody from the audience that would like to come forward?
We have a caller.
You have a caller? Okay.
Caller, please state your name for the record and your address.
Rick Goble, Caprock Partners, 1300 Dove Street, Newport Beach, California.
Welcome. You are on the phone and speaking to the council at this time in public hearing.
Great, thank you. Mayor and Council, thank you for the consideration of this matter. We respectfully request your approval of vacations associated with this agenda item and are here to answer any questions associated with it.
Thank you. Stand by. I'll ask one more time. Is there anybody from the audience, telephone, blue cards, anybody would like to talk to this gentleman about his project? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment. We have no questions for you this time. Let's see how we do with the council. Counselors, are there any comments or questions on this item? If not, the Chair will take a motion.
I just want to say there's a lot of development over there, and we wish him the very best. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Item failed. April Fools, you got it, bud. Way to go. Thank you for calling in.
Mayor.
Moving into business.
Mayor, Council, item 12, pass and adopt resolution number 2687 accepting to offer to purchase approximately 1.39 acres, more or less, of real property generally located at the northwest corner of Martin L. King Boulevard in June Avenue in North Las Vegas, Nevada, identified as successor's parcels numbers 13916310086 and 13916310087 pursuant to procedures established in the NRS 268.063 and 268.062, and authorize staff to enter into negotiations on purchase and sale agreement and agreement for development and options to repurchase. Mayor, I have to present a few items for the record regarding this item. Should be noted that on November 23rd, 2020, the city received an application from Alicia Taylor to purchase the 1.39 acres of vacant surplus land. Normally, surplus property is sold as-is at auction to the highest bidder. The city also received other interest by parties, but no formal applications were ever received. As a result, it was determined that the parcels would be sold as-is through a competitive sale for best proposal to ensure development of the parcel. The minimum price was $159,375, and that was based on the average of two independent appraisals. On December 1st, 2021, the City Council approved resolution 2674, the notice of intent to sell. The qualified offer in amount of $161,000 was received from Alicia Taylor, who's in the council chambers tonight. The land will be purchased with cash and construction will be completed with private financing. The proposal she submitted with her application indicated, the architectural site plan indicated five four-pix buildings with garages. An amendment to the comprehensive plan of rezoning would be required to support the type of development the applicant is proposing. The offer noted that in the bid package, she is aware that a zone change is required to complete the project. In addition, an amendment to the comprehensive plan would be required. She also indicated that if she's not successful in amending the comp plan and the rezoning, that she would end up modifying her proposal to include or develop property with single-family residential. The preliminary task force with offer is recommending to ensure that the offer is aware that there are also additional requirements for the development of property. The city is willing to work with her, but Ms. Taylor will need to understand that there are several requirements she would need to demonstrate, and that would be done through the task force process and eventually go through the normal zoning process to get those entitlements in place. Passage of this resolution will allow the city to accept the offer to purchase to move forward with the purchase. Approval of the resolution does not constitute approval of the proposed conceptual development plan submitted by Ms. Taylor, and she, again, will need to work with the city to ensure the development meets the Title 16 and Title 17 requirements and anything that's applicable to the development of the property. Property may be developed similar to the proposal, may be in a different type of development or nothing at all. Along with the purchase and sale agreement, there will be an agreement for development and an option to repurchase this property. This will allow the city to repurchase the property if development does not occur on the land. However, the city is not obligated to repurchase the property as well, and this will be talked about when she comes in for a task force meeting, as well as any other requirements. Council approval of both agreements is tentatively scheduled for February 16, 2022. The benefit of acceptance of the purchase resolution of the sale will remove the parcels from the city's property inventory and place them on the tax rolls. And again, this is an opportunity to see this property develop, hopefully, in a way that will be consistent in support of the area. Alicia Taylor initially contacted the city in 2019 and has expressed continued interest and has submitted all required items to work diligently through the sale process. That's all I need to add.
Thank you, Director Jordan. So that'll be submitted into the record?
Yes.
Okay. Counsel, any comments or questions on Director Jordan's verbiage or this resolution? If not, the Chair will take a motion.
I'd just like to say, Ms. Taylor, I appreciate your due diligence and your patience throughout this process since, you know, we spoke, I don't even remember how long ago, and I know that you said this is near and dear to your heart because this is home for you, and so I appreciate your willingness to stick in there and hang with us and so that we can get these nine lots developed into a very attractive product over in that area. So with that, if no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Seeing no questions or comments, good lady, City Councilwoman Goin's Brown has made a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. I got caught in my legislative ears there. I'm sorry. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Mayor, Council, item 13, pass and adopt ordinance number 3094, an ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, to include within Annex Two and make a part of said city's certain specifically described territory adjoining and contiguous to the corporate limits of said city, declaring said territory and inhabitants thereof to be annexed to said city and subject to all debts, laws, ordinance, and regulations enforced of said city, offering a map or plat of said described territory to be recorded in the office of the county recorder of Clark County, State of Nevada, and providing other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions, Councilman Verone?
I'm just happy to see that Ward One seems to be growing, and I think it's going to grow more. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Any other comments, questions? If not, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, Council, item 14, pass and adopt ordinance 3096, an ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, to include within Annex Two and make a part of said city's certain specifically described territory adjoining and contiguous to the corporate limits of said city describing or declaring said territory and inhabitants thereof to be annexed to said city and subject to all debts, laws, ordinance, and regulations enforced of said city, offering a map or plat of said described territory to be recorded in the office of the county recorder of Clark, State of Nevada, and providing other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any comments or questions? If not, the Chair will take a motion. Councilwoman Verone again?
Yes, Mayor. I just want to say that if it's growing in North Las Vegas, it's growing in Ward One. I mean, the size of the ward. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I don't know if these guys will approve that. A little getting froggy over here, but we'll take that motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, Council, item 15, pass and adopt ordinance number 3102, extending the corporate limits of the city of North Las Vegas, Nevada, to include within Annex Two and make part of said city's certain specifically described territory adjoining and contiguous to the corporate limits of said city, declaring said territory and inhabitants thereof to be annexed to said city and subject to all debts, laws, ordinances, and regulations enforced in said city, offering a map or plat of said described territory to be recorded in the office of the county recorder of the county of Clark, State of Nevada, and providing other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you, Madam Director Jordan. At this time, the Chair will take a motion. Councilman Verone?
Yes, sir. I'd like to just say enough said, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
I didn't know Director Jordan could read so well. That was nice. Item number 16, pass and adopt ordinance number 3104, meaning chapter 2.68.105 of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code by admitting subsection F1, modifying entry, minimum requirements.
Thank you, City Manager. Chair will take a motion to pass or adopt item, pardon me, ordinance 3104. If the council so approves, the Chair will take a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 17, pass and adopt ordinance number 3105, meaning chapter 8 of Title 13 of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code, and increase administrative fines for water waste violations and modify the reconsideration of appeals process therefore and other matters of property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black, you're on Southern Water Authority Board. Would you like to talk on this or make a motion?
I would be glad to make a motion. Everything that we can do as a community, as a municipality, to encourage water conservation, to use this precious resource to the best of our ability and to work together and communicate to stay viable as a community in this regard is time and effort well-spent. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 3105.
Any comments, questions? If not, the Chair accepts the motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to appointments. We're going to read these, and I'm going to let Councilman Churchill, he's had so much to do with the veterans and all the things he does, I'm going to let him make the motions on these. I think you've met these people?
Yeah.
So as we get to it, I'll just come to you, okay?
Okay. Item number 18, appoint Marie Holcomb as an at-large citizen member of the Veterans Community Commission.
Thank you, Councilman.
Motion to approve, Ms. Marie Holcomb.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Items approved.
Item number 19, appoint John Jenkins as an at-large citizen member of the Veterans Community Commission.
Motion to approve, Mr. John Jenkins.
We have a motion, counsel. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 20, appoint Michael Kelly as an at-large citizen member of the Veterans Community Commission.
Motion to approve, Mr. Michael Kelly.
We have a motion, counsel. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 21, appoint Jimmy Vega as an at-large citizen member of the Veterans Community Commission.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Jimmy Vega.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number 22, appoint Chris Hudson as an at-large citizen member of the Veterans Community Commission.
Thank you, Mayor, for the privilege of appointing these people. Again, I'll be happy to approve, Mr. Chris Hudson.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. So, just before we go on to your report, I just want to, maybe Richard might want to pipe in on this. I think Ms. Rebecca did a fine job for this Veterans Community. Rebecca, could you just come down here for a second? This, just while we finish up this Veterans Commission, and we just want to thank you for the many, many hours, and just take a second to reward you for some time to, if you have anything you want to add to this or what you see could be a benefit to the community.
Mayor and council, just thank you for indulging me in the process that we went through to find what I believe will be five wonderful members to this Veterans Community Commission. I expect great things from these folks, and I think you, you know, will get what you're looking for. So, just thank you for the opportunity.
When will you start advertising the fact? How do you see a rollout now that you're building a board? Just curious.
Yes. So, the next step is the city clerk and city attorney's office will do an orientation with these new members so they know what to expect, what the rules are, and, you know, lay the foundation. And we will have these meetings quarterly. The first meeting is anticipated for February 23rd.
Thank you very much. Well, Ms. Gibson, thank you so much. You've done great work for the city council, the city manager, and we respect your efforts. Thank you so much.
My pleasure.
Moving on to city manager's report.
Mayor and council, you kind of sort of stole my thunder. All I was going to say was just thanking Chief of Staff Rebecca Gibson for her work on the Veterans Commission. She's done an outstanding job in moving this through the process. We've had meetings with several of these individuals that have been appointed to this, and I think that with the new vision and the work that's been done by Chief of Staff Gibson and Mayor Pro Tim Churchill, that I think we're well on our way.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to second public forum. Now is the time to speak on issues that are not on the agenda tonight that are within the jurisdiction or our control of city council. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, no items raised during this second public forum may be deliberated on or acted upon by the city. However, any items discussed may be referred to the city manager or city staff for action by the city council at a later date. Madam City Clerk, do we have any blue cards, written comments, or callers on the phone at this time?
Yes, sir. We have a caller.
You have a caller. Thank you. We'll take that.
Caller, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Alpert, J E F F A L P E R T. My address is 3828 Peso Air Drive, North Las Vegas.
Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor. I was going to talk on consent agenda item number two, make a few comments and suggestions. So, the consent agenda item was concerning $1.5 million being awarded under the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money, and it went to two North Las Vegas projects, the CNA Apartments and Donna Luise Phase II project. And in looking over the documents online about this item, I noticed that apparently the decision on how to distribute the money to those two projects were made, were made by an in-house committee consisting of a representative from the city's attorney's office, one from the planning department, and one from economic and business development, and also public works, and possibly one or two people from finance. I was going to make a suggestion to the city, city manager, the council, the mayor, that there be an additional representative from the public on that committee who made that decision on how to divvy up the money. And as you probably know, I am, I am our citizen representative on Clark County Community Development Advisory Committee, and this year, they are giving out over between five and six million dollars in funds. And as usual, the projects that request money always ask for way more than what the county has to distribute, just like what occurs on my CAC committee in North Las Vegas. So, I think my suggestion would be to have a person like me, whoever's on the CDAC County Committee, be part of that discussion in-house on how the city money is distributed, you know, each year. As a member of CDAC on county level, they're right now discussing how to, you know, prioritize the different projects. There are 12 applicants seeking, you know, over $16 million in money, and the way they're doing it this year, they're going to only fund projects fully. So, they're asking the large committee that I'm on to prioritize and rank all the projects that have been submitted applications for funding, to rank them, and then try to award in full the highest ranking ones. So, some will get no money at all. And unfortunately, part of their criteria to ranking is to give highest priority to the projects that are actually in unincorporated Clark County. So, I have a feeling the two projects that you just approved, CNA Apartments and Donna Luise Phase II, who are two of the 12 that put in county applications, may not get any funding at all. So, the funding that does come into the city of North Las Vegas to give out like you just did tonight is extremely important, and like if I was on that little committee, I would have been able to give that input because as part of the CDAC committee, I've spent a lot of hours doing what they have asked us to do, reading all the applications and, you know, participating in the hearings and whatever, and, you know, really understanding the details of where these projects are, what they plan to do with the money. What it means in the end, if CNA Apartments and Donna Luise do not get funding from the county, it just means they'll use the funding you presented to them tonight, and they'll probably just have to charge a bit higher in rents to recoup their investments. So, my suggestion again to the city manager would be to consider next year, having whoever our city's non-voting member of CDAC, whoever that person is, be part of the decision on the local level within North Las Vegas. So, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. We're, we can't really ask a lot of questions on this because it's not an agendized item, but I can tell you the city manager is shaking his head. It sounds like a brilliant idea. Would you get with the city manager on that, and possibly you, you give us a good opportunity to involve more people in this process? We, we think it's probably smart, okay? So, if you're good with the city manager on that.
Thank you.
I'd appreciate it.
I will do that. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Is that the last speaker? That was a good speaker, by the way.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public forum, and this meeting is adjourned.